Sorry. It's just hot. I did. I'm ahead of ya. Thought that was the gal. Sorry. The papers are gonna be flying everywhere.
Sorry.
Here, I'll turn it off until I absolutely can't. Can't start having a meltdown in here. And need a fan.
Congressmen, please. Plaid the speakers.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father God, we come together tonight as a family, friends, and neighbors to discuss matters needed for our health, welfare, and safety of our community. May your word be the tool we use in deciding our affairs tonight. Let God, the Spirit, encourage us tonight to be kind to one another, to maintain self-control and patience in listening to one another. Lord, we pray tonight that we find joy and peace and love in our fellow citizens. The love you have shown us to, shown us, your children, when you sent God the Son, our Savior and King, to sacrifice for us on the cross. It is in his glory, in his glorious name we pray tonight. In Jesus' name, amen. I have an announcement. It's been a pleasure serving Bourbon County. Effectively, immediately, I'm resigning. All right. That's unfortunate news. I don't know what to say about it. But I guess we'll move on with the meeting. What's that? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll start with the approval of the agenda. Is there any amendments that need to be made? Or is it good as written?
We'll take it as written, and we'll table a few things when we get to them.
Okay. All right. So I move that we approve the agenda as written.
A second. Milburn?
Yes.
Beerbauer?
Yes. We'll take approval of the consent agenda, approval of 523 accounts payable totaling Approval of accounts payable for 53025 totaling Approval of payroll for 53025 totaling And tax rule corrections. I move that we approve consent agenda items A through D.
A second. Milburn?
Yes.
Beerbauer?
Yes. And then, first item is pursuant to KSA 7543-19B1 to discuss personnel matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy for job performance. Will you start him when?
One moment, David. Can we approve the minutes from 51925 first?
Did I miss that one?
It's okay.
Okay. I'm sorry. I move that we approve the minutes for 51925.
A second. Beerbauer?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
So then we have a call.
And then, the executive session, I would say we just need to remove that, given the circumstances.
So we'll table that.
And then, I just want to make a statement. I am respectfully declining to perform the employee grievance process in the future due to continual interference in the most recent investigation I performed. I will share my findings with the county counselor and present him, let him present to the commission at a later date.
So that item has been tabled. Health benefits with Mr. Don Doherty. I thought I seen them walking away.
Right, and so we are gonna table that until, until a future date. Let's do June 23 on that, because he's gonna need an executive session. So I move we table health benefits until June 23 meeting, and an executive session.
So it'll be two in an executive session?
Yeah, that's what he needed.
Okay. The next item is Dr. Cohen.
That's right.
Contractual services from the municipalities.
Should I sit or?
Yes, just have a seat at the table, and just, let's make sure your mic's on.
Yep, it is.
Okay. So I, from, from the date of signing on, I, I've been searching for some help. And I think that Dr. Cohen might be that, and he's here to talk about that a little bit.
Thank you. It was very nice to meet you.
Nice meeting you.
I'm Steve Cohen, and you're Mr. Beerbauer. And so, I own a, operate a small consulting operation. We have six employees. We're based in Kansas City, and we specialize in municipal human resources. We have probably 70 or 80 health departments between Kansas City and Missouri. We have at least that many cities, probably a dozen counties, and ambulance districts. So we're very familiar with elected officials and the issues associated with managing and operating within the county statutes and culture issues. So Ms. Milburn asked if we would assist, and we've submitted a proposal to do that. Basically, what we would be doing is, on the continuum of HR, there would be HR systems work. Job descriptions and policy manuals are probably the two most out of date, as I understand them. And we would bring those up to date and, you know, provide the HR. It's kind of the tracks that the personnel runs on, kind of the highways. And then, wage and salary plan development, and the performance appraisal process kind of rounds out the HR systems work. We would assist in all investigations or examinations of allegations if employees or elected officials have concerns. We would be doing those kinds of things. We have an employee hotline. So your employees could pick up the phone on a, basically, real time, just as the commission and elected officials could pick up the phone on a real-time basis and say, and I would be the one answering those questions. Steve, I've got this situation. What do you recommend? And so, in real time, I would be providing the guidance or recommendations on managing this or that situation. So we don't really want the employees to immediately call the Kansas Human Rights Commission. That puts the county in a position of being fined and, as well as, you know, publicly humiliated. And we then would, would address situations as they come up, and hopefully satisfy the employees and the elected officials that things are being handled in real time and effectively. And then, there are things like training. The commission is gonna have some new people, no doubt. And so, some governance training. What is governance, what is not? Sexual harassment prevention. If the employer does kind of nothing else, that, that's a big issue. The way the laws and the courts work, if the employer has not done prevention, and there's a case, then the courts will really attack the employer because the employer hasn't done anything to prevent it. If the county has done prevention, then the county's liability is diminished down to tiny, tiny, and, or nonexistent. And rightfully so, the courts would attack the perpetrator. And so, the objective would be to protect the county, to protect the employees, and to put, would be perpetrators on notice that we're not going to tolerate that the courts and the government really have two sacrosanct positions. And one is that if an employer can't provide a safe environment for the employee, then they shouldn't be an employer. And that extends to, if you can't provide a safe environment relative to the issue of sexual harassment, then the government, whether it's the federal government or not, the state, then doesn't want the employer to be an employer. So obviously, that, there's just an immense amount of liability associated with that issue. And so, my job, my company's job is first and foremost to protect the county. And we want to see the county operate in perpetuity, and we want to see the county operate in a healthy, positive way so that we can build a culture and, and retain employees. And, and I would help weed out ones that are not a good match for the organization and people that, you know, want to harm the county. So, so there's three, really four, four areas. One is systems work. The next is training. The next is investigations in what I affectionately call mess management. And then, the third is to provide a resource for the employees to call and seek redress without moving you into an area where you could be fined or publicly humiliated. I mean, obviously, employees have rights to go wherever they want to go. But if the county has a resource for them, then they'll go. And so, I had recommended to Ms. Milburn that she talked to the city administrator at Arc City, Kansas, earlier, or late last year. We were the HR director for the city. Over the years, we've had lots of cities around you. Derby, Wichita, both have been clients that I can recall. Lawrence.
I've checked several references.
Yeah. So that's a, kind of an overview of what we're proposing. It's a all-inclusive fee. There wouldn't be any add-ons. If, it's kind of a bundled approach. So if the county approved it, then we would act as your HR director and HR department. You would have my full company's background. So when I'm on vacation, there's still somebody available, or when I'm not available for some reason. But, so you're hiring a company, not a, an individual with lots of experience in municipal settings. I'm glad to answer any questions that you might have. But it's a, as I said, it's a bundled or all-inclusive. So whatever it took, whether it was, you know, five investigations, or one, or three trainings, or none, or whatever the county needed, we would do for that fee.
Okay.
So I'll let you ask questions, because maybe I shouldn't have, but I, you know, because it's helpful if I ask questions here at the table. But I've already asked a lot of questions to Dr. Cohen. So I've got to talk to him. So you just take an opportunity to speak to him.
Right now, I'm, I'm kinda, you got any other, you got any material, or?
I, it came out in your packet.
Okay.
So.
All right.
It would have been emailed to you, I believe.
Okay. I'll look over some of that, and then we'll, we're gonna re-talk budget.
Yeah, well, yes. And then the fact that we just lost our HR here, the one that was actually standing in that, that role for interim. So now we're, we have nothing again. So I think it's really important that we do something, David, if you take it very seriously, please.
Okay. Worth looking at. I appreciate it.
Okay.
So can we discuss this at the next meeting? Again, can we put it on the agenda at the next meeting? So we can get some, you can do some thinking, and we can get back with Dr. Cohen.
And in the packet I get out is the fees. I didn't look today.
Yes.
But the fee, the fees in there too.
He's in there, yes.
And here's my contact information. If you like calling and asking individual questions, by all means. Just give me a holler.
And it, and it is, David. I don't know if you heard me. It's a fraction of what HR would cost if we put somebody here.
Okay. All right.
Right. And that's, that's really our objective, is that, you know, we know that HR professionals are hard to find, and they're expensive. And your size organization doesn't really require a full-time person, just like you don't have a full-time attorney. Call when you need one, or, or as needed. So HR is the same way.
All right. I appreciate it. Thank you.
So we'll bring this back to the, the June 9 meeting.
June 9.
And you don't have to, I'll call and talk to you.
Yeah, very good. Well, it's a pleasure to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cohen. Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you. Thank you so much.
Okay. So next on the item is an executive session pursuant to 7543-19B2, consultation with attorney for public body of agency, which will be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship for litigation. B4.
Bill, sir.
Okay. How, how long do you think?
20 minutes.
20 minutes? Okay, B4, 20 minutes. Be Bob Johnson, Jacob, and the two commis, two commissioners. And 20 minutes? And we will reconvene at, be 6, 6:04. Right?
6:06.
6:06. Here.
6:07, probably. By the time you get in, there's gonna be 47.
I'm not gonna give you that extra 20 seconds.
Might go by them seconds.
6:07, I'll put it down.
You know.
You want it?
No.
You see, we just.
Here. No, hopefully they'll get a fixed one.
No. What's your seventy year, where you got?
No, don't want to do that.
Move to that. We return to session.
Second. Beer bar.
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
No action. Okay. Now we are at old business, department updates, and we start with Mrs. Walker.
Yes. In front of you, I laid a document. I think maybe you may have turned it over in your folder, maybe right, your binder.
The.
No, in your binder. The three.
Oh, in my binder?
Yeah, it's like right to your, there you go.
Right there.
Yes. Um, I, it's, I feel like it's my responsibility to bring issues like this to your attention. And this impacts a budget that you guys are in complete control over, and that is employee benefits. And so on, there were some raises given on five twenty seven that were pretty significant. A lot of times if it's a fifty cent raise or whatever, it doesn't impact maybe the employee benefit fund, you know, that much. But in this case, it definitely does, about, to the tune of about nineteen thousand dollars. And so this is an unbudgeted item that probably needs to be discussed in length. We've had ten payrolls up to this point, so there's about sixteen payrolls left. So for the twenty twenty five budget, it would impact the budget by sixty three thousand dollars in this particular fund for the raises. And I did reach out to the department to see if this would require a budget amendment, and it will require a budget amendment in order to accommodate this. But the piece of it that is in your control is the tax side of it. So all your taxes, all your FICA, all your unemployment, all your capers, that comes out of your employee benefit fund too. That is your complete control. So when we don't have salary caps or salary schedules, this is where we get into trouble, because this is not a budgeted item. This was not budgeted for last year.
Why would you do it outside of your budget if it's not budgeted?
Because maybe there's more revenue coming in. I can't answer why, but there may be more revenue coming into the fund, to that particular fund.
It might have projected that it's, that it's gonna cover it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
My question would be, is the revenue stable, that they'll be there every single year?
Oh, so it may not cover it a year later and the year after that.
Yeah, because you, when, when you deal with payroll, you're, you're locking yourselves in for future.
Right, okay.
You probably have this amount in that fund, but you're just, you're dipping into cash reserves because it wasn't levied for, for this, for twenty twenty five.
So, right now, what I'm looking at here for, for, for the two departments, you said it was nineteen thousand, and then by the end of the year, it'll be at, what, sixty three?
No. So, for the particular departments, it's sixty three thousand dollar increase in wages.
Those two departments?
Yes.
By the end of the year.
By the end of the year.
In wages.
Yeah. For, for a full year, for a full, so for twenty twenty six, that impact will be a hundred and three thousand dollars.
So we would have to increase the budget by a hundred and three thousand dollars.
In that particular department.
In, in our budget sessions coming up.
Yes.
Okay.
But we did not intend to do that. We did not intend to increase any budgets. Maybe David intended to increase, but I, I intended to to not increase budgets at all, so.
What is the impact on the benefit side of it? How much are we talking?
Nineteen thousand, one oh six ninety six is for your taxes. That's for a full year.
Okay.
Eleven thousand through the end of the year, roughly, eleven to twelve.
So we have to add sixty three thousand in wages plus nineteen thousand in taxes?
Yeah. So your sixty three thousand is in, in a different fund. The fund that you control is the employee benefits fund.
Okay.
Which is the nineteen thousand.
But it's all, it's all tax revenue fund, and so if, if it goes here, then it don't go anywhere else. And, and that's if we have enough for it to go here in the next year, and I, I don't.
Well, that'll be discussed at budget time, I think, when we start discussing twenty twenty.
The raises have already been given.
Right, I understand that. So it is concurrent.
So it would force your hand at raising a budget, is what it sounds like, and I'm really not.
I don't know.
Ended that, so.
For you to cover.
That would be a question for them.
For you to cover, for you to cover the employee benefit side, you're gonna see an increase for this year of about twelve thousand dollars. This is just straight time, so this doesn't include any kind of overtime. So if these employees have overtime, that number's gonna be bigger.
But that, okay, so the wage side of it right now is covered out of their, no?
They told me they'll have to do a budget amendment.
Okay.
So it wasn't budgeted, and, but the money is possibly covered this year out of a.
I mean, you can ask the department if you want to. I don't know. I wasn't involved in those conversations. I just, it was significant enough, I felt like I needed to bring it to you, to discuss.
So we're looking at totals to get us through the year, seventy, eighty thousand dollars, right?
About seventy three, yeah.
Seventy three?
That's if you don't have overtime.
Well, okay, so we got sixty three thousand in wages, and then you said a twelve thousand left, okay.
That's at straight time, but there's generally overtime.
We always face that problem with, with overtime, so we're just have to see where we go with that.
They usually budget their overtime too, don't they? A lot of the departments budget overtime. Oh, hi there. Do you want to come up here?
We sat down with the finance advisor, Kim and Murphy has worked, came up.
Come on up, Bill.
Come to the conclusion where we, how we came to this conclusion. So, like I said.
You're gonna slide that much?
Yep. I would, based on the numbers that were given, and based on our current staffing issues, because we are shorthanded, we have lost two officers since the first of the year, so that entails saves us money on payroll.
Okay.
Saves us money on benefits.
Yeah.
We're looking at, hopefully not losing another third.
Okay.
And not only that, we're also two or three, I think, at least two, if not three people short.
Okay.
That were budgeted for.
Okay.
So with the savings and not filling those positions yet, because of, based on our salaries, that's money that's gonna be in payroll.
Okay.
That's money that's gonna be in benefits.
Okay.
So theoretically, what I've seen is there should be, without a problem, enough money to cover these increases.
So long as you don't fill those positions in the future.
Well, we got, we ha, we're gonna have to fill those positions, because we're shorthanded. We've got guys that are working six, seven days in a row.
So, but we can't give a raise saying
I understand that.
That we're not gonna, that we're gonna consume these positions and then fill the positions anyway. That wouldn't work.
I understand that. But to get qualified people in here, we have to address the issue at hand, because we can't. We're spending, I take, under Sheriff Davidson, he gave me some numbers, I think they were a little large. But just since he's been here, I'm taking a low number of twenty people that we've trained, outfitted, and put on the road that we eventually lost. If you put a minimum on that with the training and the equipment, fifty thousand apiece, and they have to stay here a year, we've already lost a million dollars in trained people, because we can't pay enough, period. And that's a low number. So we've gotta get our starting wages up, so we can get qualified people in the door. We have to. We've got people that are working overtime, driving up the street, making two dollars more an hour. And we, we just can't do it. We gotta get that up a little bit. We're asking for the whole elephant. We just need to adjust so that we're somewhat compatible, comparable to areas in our region.
I would be more okay with it if you found it in, within your budget in other places. Does that make sense? Like your finance guy went through and he says, hey, we, we got some extra money here, we can put this into raises.
There's certain things that you can't use that to supplant forth. So, other thing that you might need to look at is numbers that we ran through since twenty twenty two? Twenty twenty two, theoretically, when you look at the numbers, not theoretically, but when you look at the numbers, our, the mill levy to support the sheriff's office has came down. Granted, it's coming back up, but since then, it was, it has dropped over three hundred thousand dollars.
But that is because it was being supported through sales tax dollars.
Because you're supplanting it. But you're still running the same number in twenty twenty two that you're running now. So theoretically, what you're doing is we're trying to run the sheriff's office, commend him for running a sheriff's office on a twenty twenty two or twenty twenty one budget that has not changed. You're, you're putting money in there.
No, that's not true. The budget's gone up, but.
But not enough to offset CPI.
The reason why that was. But the reason why that was, well, nobody's gotten cola here, nobody's got a raise.
That's a problem.
Yeah, we know that.
I agree.
But that's, that's past administration.
Exactly.
And the past administration made a choice to use sales tax dollars to help support, to keep taxes down. So that's why you're seeing the tax levy drop.
Then why is it that the only sheriff's office is the only one that was affected by it?
That, that's, that's not true. They've done it in the general fund too.
I apologize.
We'll just, the matter at hand right now is, is a budget amendment for twenty twenty five. That's what we're gonna have to, that's what we're gonna have to face. And then we're gonna have to look at twenty twenty six budget when you guys bring
Correct.
your budget to us.
Yes, sir.
We're gonna have to look at that, because you guys are gonna have to put that
Yes, sir.
increase in there.
Yes, sir.
So then we're gonna have to decide, and hopefully we'll be by three people again, and so then we can.
Just a moment. If we don't increase your budget next year, then what are you gonna do? I mean, how would you pay them?
We have to operate.
We've got to operate from these people.
Yeah. I mean, there's just no way around that.
Not to throw you underneath the bus by no means, but she was one of my employees years ago, and as a correctional officer, and one of the reasons that she left was because of pay.
Oh, no, absolutely not.
According to some of the employees that you worked with, your subordinates, that was one of the reasons you gave them.
Oh, no, no, I don't, I don't think.
So I think that's, like I said, I'm not turning you into a developer.
Absolutely not. No, but, but I, I don't, I don't mind, I don't mind explaining. It was, it was the, the hours. It wasn't, wasn't pay by any means, because I'm not, you can ask anybody, not big on the money.
So you said the hours.
That's right, yeah.
But we're gonna have to have some reasonable pay to offset those hours that those people work, correct?
Yep.
I get it, I get it. The, the hours are not ideal.
No, they're not, yeah.
I won't, I won't, I won't ever say they are, when you gotta work holidays and weekends and nights and all that, but, but definitely.
Yeah, we're looking at about seventy five thousand to, to amend. Is that right, or is it just the sixty three thousand in benef, or in wages that we need to?
I don't know, because they'll be overtime. This is just straight time that was figured. These are rough numbers that were figured based on what the increases were given.
What, what do we normally do on overtime right now? What's the budget? You guys got an overtime budget?
Depends on their schedule.
Yeah.
And if they have to cover shifts, I mean, it's, it's very much unknown, but the overtime has climbed in the last few years.
So we'd have to make another budget amendment if we go over on overtime.
Also, remember on that overtime, that's not all charged to the county, because a lot of time that overtime is worked during impact or step programs. That's reimbursed by the state.
Yeah.
So that's money that is, it's overtime, but the county, the state comes back in and says, well, you spent thirty five hundred dollars this payroll period for overtime, or every reimbursement you, that's thirty five hundred dollars. Based on our shortages, I would say there's more, there should be plenty in personal services to cover this increase in the benefits.
In your current budget?
Yes.
Okay.
So your current budget will cover your increases?
Yes.
That, that, that makes a huge difference.
I do.
That's not what your financial advisor told me.
That makes a difference.
He said it will requ, he told me it would require a budget amendment.
I understand that. And there's opinions, everybody has one, and based on the numbers that I seen, that I put together, we, because we're shorthanded, and those positions were budgeted for already, the money, it was wanting to be there. Because, again, we've saved with Lou Zen Turner, that's almost six months of payroll and salary and benefits that we haven't been paying out. Now we just lost another gentleman, Penland. I mean, that's gonna be more salary, more benefits that we're saving. So, but we haven't replaced them.
The exit interviews that I have done have not been about pay.
You're doing exit interviews with our?
David. They ask, they ask for them.
Interesting, because they haven't asked for us.
David.
That's not what they advise us.
Yep. But anyway, that's another issue.
But we'll follow up with that.
Yes.
All right. So, right now, then we don't.
Don't want everybody to fight.
Oh, I'm not fighting.
You guys' budget's gonna cover this year's until we, until we have a need, then we don't need to do an amendment, so let's just.
And nothing, even if there is a need for an amendment, why, why would you have to do one right now? If we get down the road and, and, and our numbers are off, then we talk about that, and we have that discussion at a later date.
Okay, I'm good with it. What about you?
I don't think there's gonna need one, but that's.
Has anybody ran this by the county, the county's auditor? Who is your other banor?
No.
Jared Gilmore-Pullis?
Yes.
I mean, I can call him. I mean, we probably need advice with the auditor, I would guess, because they're, they're the ones that provide the statements to the, to the commission.
Yeah. Ideally, and I talked to Bill a lot about this, ideally, I would like Bill to have his own mill, and I understand within our mill, he has his own mill, but that's not what I'm talking about. Bill understands, and I think you understand.
Yes, ma'am.
Ideally, I would like, I would like to, to cut the sheriff's department loose, and so they can do as they see fit with their mill, and so that they don't come in front of us, and so that they have their own authority in answer to an authority that is not the commission, and I think that we, we would, would not be in these.
He's still responsible for the financial side of it.
Right.
You're ba, you're basically, you're basically telling them, when you set your budget, you're saying, you get this much.
Yep.
And it's four mills, two mills, twenty mills.
Yes, and, but when they go over, it comes out of the general fund, and there's, there's no money left in there.
And so I would rather it be.
And they go over, we really still gotta pay that budget, so.
Yeah, so what are you gonna pay it with?
I mean, so we really need to be, when you guys bring your budget to us, then we need to have this dialogue so that
I agree.
so that we're all on the same page, and, you know, so that.
Otherwise, when we do the budget, and we say
So that we don't end up in this type of.
We're not gonna spend any more money, and then we spend it anyway, and then, you know, we're forced to raise valuation, valuations or mill or something, and I don't really like that.
Historically, have you been within your budget before? Has that ever happened?
They just kinda move money around, and so I'm not gonna go into detail about that when we go to the budget side of it here in the next couple of weeks, when.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I just happen to know Mur, he's always been within his budget.
Yep.
So maybe that'll correct itself, I don't know. I mean, you have to approve a budget, so when you say you wanna give them a mill, a certain mill, that's what you do when you establish their budget.
I understand, but when, but if you were your own, you couldn't really go over it, and then somebody else have to answer for it.
Problem is, that's.
Does that, I mean, Bill understands that, you understand that, we all understand that.
The problem is, tax poorly and, and Kansas law says, if the sheriff says he needs three hundred officers to fulfill the obligations to enforce the laws, it has to be reasonable.
Reasonable, define that.
No thanks.
Exactly.
I'm not gonna, so, and, and every sheriff knows it, and they don't take advantage of it, but if, even if you said you get this many mills, and he says, okay, whatever, but I need this much money, and here's why, if it's reasonable, you have to pay for it. So you might as well just budget it based on a reasonable budget.
Reasonable is, is how much money we have to spend.
Reasonable based on.
Not just raising a mill or the taxes, because to.
Reasonable is to operate a sheriff's office safely, securely for the service to the citizens, the constituents, safely. Right. And to have qualified people to do that, educated people, train people to do that. Those are reasonable expectations for the public, period. And if it's, if, I'm just pulling a number. If it costs us two million dollars to do that, and you budget us one point five, you're gonna have to pay the two. And if it gets push comes to shove because of Neelander versus Lincoln, there's a thing, and they're called, it's called a writ of mandamus. If we're not funded, then we go to the courts, and we talk to the courts, and file a writ of mandamus, and the court, the county has to pay it.
I don't want.
As long as it's, as long as it's reasonable.
So, I mean, you know, we're, we're getting ready to come into, to, to twenty twenty six, but right now, I mean, with what we're gonna, with what, what they've said, we'll just have to wait and see, and then if we start, or we have to make the amendment, we'll make the amendment. And try to find the money to get through twenty twenty five. Um, and try to find the money to get through twenty twenty-five. And then we'll look at their budget come twenty twenty-six, and then we'll have to go accordingly, one way or the other.
Yeah, and when we raise things.
My, my goal has always been to lower, uh, you know, our ta, our, our property tax footprint, so, you know.
And if we can't, then everybody needs to, to be letting everybody know why.
But I also wanna see wages, I wanna see wages at a competitive level all the way across, not just with their departments, but with Public Works and, and our other departments as well, so.
Well, if you wanna, if you wanna talk about, you know, lowering the mill levy and the budgets, that's certainly good stewardship on the commissioner's side, and I think that's a discussion you have with the sheriff and his team at the budget area, like, you know, can we get by with less deputies or less service or, or something? And, you know, there can't be an absolutely no, and there can't be an absolute yes. You try to mesh to a point where you're comfortable with the tax mill levy and, you know.
Yeah.
Ninety-nine percent of counties, it's a, it's a group effort. It's not us versus them. It's not them versus us. It's how do we get this to a manageable level so we can keep the mill levy, mill levy at a reasonable rate? So that's, that's really the mentality you have to have. It's not, we wanna lower the mills and we want more money. It's how do we coincide and keep the mills down? And maybe you cut a little bit here, and we'll give you a little bit here. I mean.
Ultimately, at the end of the day.
Mur, Mur, I've been county councillor in Allen County for ten years, named the sheriff. We never had that issue. I mean, they, they always figured out a way to get the budget down to where they wanted to be, and maybe you can't do it here, but it's not that hard.
And also, the reason why Murph is here is because of the last six straight years, being sheriff, trying to explain that. But while the budgets and everything else, instead of, well, it's just Sheriff Martin, it's Sheriff Martin. Now I have somebody who's actually said in the sheriff's chair also actually knows the operations. So now, not just Sheriff Mar, Sheriff, oh, wait a minute, maybe Sheriff Martin kinda has the idea where he's going. So that's the reason why Murph is here is to devise and move on, and also with, uh, what they were telling. I can tell you, last year, when I put, when I put twenty twenty-five's budget together, I had to increase my starting wages over there. I had to. I just, I wasn't getting people in the door. I couldn't keep them there.
We were losing everybody to Southeast Kansas.
There and Highway Patrol and everywhere else, and, I mean, you've got agencies just around us that are starting out twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five bucks an hour, and we just can't.
We're not done.
We're not competing with that, seventeen bucks an hour and fifteen dollars.
I understand you guys are fighting for your people. I get that, but, but we are all answering to all the people of Bourbon County.
Sure.
So you guys know that, so.
Yeah.
So.
But it has to be a cohesive budget experience. It can't be, we're gonna cut, we want more. If we wanna cut, how can we get it down here?
Ultimately, it comes down to, to public safety, welfare.
I mean, when you talk about budgets, it's give and take, you know? We need to be here. What can, what can we help with, or where can we alleviate some of that burden? Um, I think I was pretty good at that at Allen County. I think Bobby can speak volumes to that. I was able to figure things out here, there, and everywhere, and if I had to cut something, I figured out a way to make it work.
How much do you guys collect in out-of-county bid for a, on your elevation scheme?
Uh, kind of yearly basis, just started.
Yeah, that's been, but it's on its way back up, so.
That's one way to sometimes offer, it doesn't go to their fund.
But we've been.
Goes to general, I think, doesn't it?
It all has to pass through the general.
Does it go to theirs?
It goes to theirs.
But it passes through the general.
No.
Oh, does it?
They set in a fund by themselves. No, they set in a fund by themselves.
Yes, correct.
Yeah.
Is that, there's still remnants from the tax lead.
That's, that's sometimes a way to help subsidize, so that's what we're doing.
They get all that funding.
So, thank you for the time.
Yes.
Hopefully it clarified, and then wanna come to budget discussion, we've got a financial advisor for a beer. They'll explain a little bit more in detail.
The finance, I guess.
Yes.
Where we got. Yes.
Well, and we're gonna be looking at, because we've already been talking about, you guys mentioned it a while ago, about COLA and, and that, so we're already looking at trying to revamp our pay scale overall so that we can start factoring in some of this stuff, so.
Gotcha.
At least that's what I'm gonna plan on bringing to the table, so.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Yep, thank you. So, are you finished with?
Yep.
Okay, uh, next would be Brian Allen, disaster.
Ready?
Yep.
Um, I'm just here tonight to ask you to sign the, um, declaration of disaster that we had resulting from the storms on the nineteenth, actually, it was the eighteenth and nineteenth, but we pretty much got it on the nineteenth. So we met our threshold easily with road damage and all that, so. I, I have verbally declared, that's what I'm supposed to do, but I have to follow that up with an actual written declaration signed by the commission in order for, and then I can send that into KEMA, and then they'll go through the channels, go up the, the stream like always, go to the governor, and then go to the president, and so.
Okay, so this resolution says proclamation of a state local disaster emergency for Bourbon County, Kansas. Whereas on the second day of June twenty twenty-five, the Board of Commissioners of Bourbon County, Kansas, finds that certain conditions have caused or eminently threatened to cause widespread or severe damage, injury, or loss of life or property in disaster proportion in Bourbon County, Kansas. Whereas such conditions have created obstructions which endanger health, safety, and welfare of persons and property within the border of Bourbon County, Kansas. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Bourbon County Commissioners of Bourbon County, Kansas, that the Board of County Commissioners of Bourbon County, Kansas, under and by virtue of the authority vested in it by KSA one nine seven six, sup dot four eight dash nine three two comma, does hereby proclaim that a state of local disaster emergency exists. It is further resolved and proclaimed that the area within the border of Bourbon County, Kansas, covered by this proclamation and resolution, is the entire area of Bourbon County, Kansas. Be it further resolved that said board has all rights and/or powers to perform such function as are vested in said board by and through the provisions of the Kansas Emergency Preparedness Act of nineteen seventy-five. It is further resolved and proclaimed that this resolution shall remain in effect for a period of fourteen days unless terminated earlier or renewed by, consists, consists of the governing body adopted by the Board of Bourbon County Commissioners the second day of June twenty twenty-five. So I'm gonna go ahead and sign that so that you can have a chance of getting.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's.
I move we approve the resolution eighteen twenty-five, resolution and proclamation.
I'll second.
It's, it's pretty simple that what, what we have to do is we have to declare, and then if the governor declares, then we can get on to that. If the governor doesn't declare, then that will expire.
Send it flying.
One other little simple thing that I wanted to bring up since I'm at the meeting tonight, if I could. I'm gonna, we're gonna start, we're going over our public safety, siren issues, things like that right now. And one of the things that some of the other counties in our area have done, and I think we should do as well, is if someone has like a safe space in their house, like for tornadoes and things like that, that we're gonna start, we wanna compile a list of those, because if there is a tornado and you're in a safe, what, safe shelter inside your house, and your house falls in and you can't get out, we'll know to go check that house.
Okay.
And, uh, other counties, like I said, I got the idea from, from other counties that are doing it in our area. And, and like I said, it's, it's not one of those things, those things aren't taxable. So, you know, it's just, we wanna compile a list that we can say, okay, you know, hey, it was on the east side of town. There's somebody over here on Tierney Road that has one in their garage. We need to go check and make sure she's okay. And so I was gonna put that information out, but I wanted you kinda get you guys' blessing before I did that, just so you know what's going on.
Okay, well, I'm gonna check them all anyway, just in case, because everybody might not get on that list.
Right, I mean. We actually would go, we would go door to door, of course, but if you actually, you know, are there and you know, okay, it got over there, I know she has one, we need to check on her for sure. And then, I mean, we're gonna go, I mean, they're gonna go door to door, but that initial response, you can go straight there. That's, like I said, I think, just think it, I think it would be helpful for our first responders.
Okay.
So, anyway, just wanted to let you know what we're doing on that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Eric?
Now, Mr. Bailey.
I'll piggyback off of Brian there a little bit, just kinda give you an area of where most of our destruction was from that storm on, I believe it was the nineteenth, the Monday night. Uh, basically fifty-four highway out to about Redfield Road or a hundred and twenty-fifth, south to about the Crawford County line, east over to about Vernon County. That's where the large part of the washout areas were, where bridges were, um, affected. Roads were extremely washed out. And then on basically Soldier Road going west, going five miles each way or what have you, from about a hundred and twenty-fifth out to the Allen County line, we had several trees, large trees, that came down for whatever reason. I'm not sure if it's due to the moisture, and then with the wind, the rip balls, or what, what happened there for sure. But we had several, several trees, so we're still cleaning those up. Encourage everyone, if you do have a road of concern, um, please let us know. And ask that you please be patient, because we got hit again last week with more rain, and it looks like we're gonna get rain about every day this week as well, so, um, it's just the nature of the beast right now. That's what Mother Nature is giving us, and we'll make the best of it and work as hard as we can to get roads back up.
Would you mind talking a little bit about, um, about your, your long-term plan to build the crown up and knock the, um, the, the gully on the side of the road down?
We've been working with our motor grader operators to try and get our crowns built back up on the road and get the, what I call the lips on the edge, so the water can get off the road to get to the ditches, along with ditching. So we can get water, standing on your roads is one of the worst things you can have. It gets down in your subbase and, and, uh, then you start seeing failure of your road. So that's one of our big goals this year, is to try and get out and, and get the crown built back in the road, do the ditching. But before we can do that, Mother Nature's gonna have to cooperate with us, and we're gonna have to get some dry weather for several weeks before we can, um, even consider doing that. Um, we tried to go out today and do a little bit of roadside mowing. Ditches still have a lot of water.
They do, yeah.
In them, so we'll, uh, when things dry out, we will continue to try and mow the best we can along the edge, but we won't be able to get down in the ditches to do as, um, as much as we would like to do. But as far as getting the crown and things built back up in the roads, um, that's gonna be a little bit time-consuming. And we're gonna have to have dry weather. There's just no other way about it, so.
Okay.
Kinda gives you update on that.
Thank you.
Yep. Another update, Elm Creek Lake, the roof's on the house, and the roof is on the three shelter, or the two shelter houses, the third shelter already had a roof on it. And then on the outhouses, we will continue to work to get those.
Okay.
Tinned as well, but, um, wanna give a lot of credit to Todd Fox and, and his wife. Stephanie done an outstanding job. I believe Stephanie's father as well volunteered their time. And then we had, uh, four or five county public works employees as well that stepped up and helped.
Can you get a list of all of them, too, if you could, for us?
Yep.
Yes, please.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, while we're talking, Elm Creek, past Commissioner Weisenhund had reached out to me, talked with, um, Don George, sorry, drew blank, uh, about applying again for phase two of the, of the grant. I've talked with Ag Engineering, they do not have the dam inspection done at this time. It should be in the future, near future here, but it's not done at this time. Phase two is due June sixteenth. Don has worked very hard to get it extended out as far as he can. Um, Ag Engineering did have a recommendation of maybe applying for, like, a feasibility study for fifty grand to see about doing the valve, um, what it would take to drain down the lake, to see what it would take to repair the, the, uh, valve box and repair the dam. But I need to know whether you guys want, wanna proceed forward with that, how we wanna do that, and I was hoping.
They wanna, fifty thousand is what they wanna charge?
No, that's what we would apply for, just to, um, and, and that's, that's just a guess without having the study. Are the, uh, inspection done at the, at the lake? I, I don't.
I'd rather wait for the inspection.
And, and if we do wait for that, just so I'm very clear on that, we will probably miss the deadline of, of June sixteenth.
Of his second phase?
The second phase of the grant has to be turned in by June sixteenth, so you may have to wait another year.
Yep.
To apply.
Yeah, I mean, that may be what we have to do then.
Okay.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm still thinking that, you know, saving us money-wise, we'd be better off just to get that feasibility study, or the inspection done first.
I, I think that would be.
Yeah, and then, then we can go from there.
So if you speak to Mr. George, and if he asks you again, we're waiting on the.
Dam inspection, okay.
Okay.
Again, I wish Commissioner Weisenhund, but there's a group called Kansas Bonanza. Will be coming into town this weekend, and it's a group of individuals that are on side-by-sides. And what they do is they drive your county roads or what have you, and they're going to pick up trash and whatever might be in the ditches, and they've asked if we could set a roll-off for them to put their findings in the roll-off.
Do you have a roll-off?
Yeah, we have one at the shop that we could, that we could set out for them. Individual by the name of Adam Church is kinda heading this. Church.
Well, um.
I think.
I think that's a good idea.
I think it's a great idea.
I will make a motion to do that if you would like it.
It would be at his residence. That's where they're meeting, is my understanding.
Okay. Sounds like that's the base of operation.
The base of operation, and they said they would go out around Bourbon Allen Lake and Elm Creek Lake and just kinda drive the, the backroads and enjoy the scenery and pick up.
Okay.
Trash and debris out of the ditches.
Well, I prefer we make a motion for this, and so I move that we allow, uh, Public Works to set a roll-off at the location for this Kansas Bonanza for people that are helping our county clean up trash in our ditches.
Right.
I'll second.
Mike, can I remember?
Yes.
Your back.
Yes.
And then, last but not least, we have been put on notice by Allen County landfill that on high wind warnings by the National Weather Service that they will be shutting down. So we will have to work out some logistics on our end. I got the notice today. I'd heard about the notice a week or two, but we actually got the notice today.
You mean during high winds or shutting down indefinitely?
When the national weather.
They shut down during high wind days. They won't, they won't be taking, uh, delivery, you know, like we haul them from our landfill to them.
Do they burn the trash? Why are they shutting down for wind?
Because it blows all over the place.
To the, it's, it's drive by it, it's, it's crazy, especially even, I don't know what they did, they considered.
Scatters faster than making sure they can bury it.
They considered, uh, not allowing, um, plastic bags.
Yeah, that's down the road.
It is.
Well, so then you would have to sort through and pick out all the plastic bags?
They haven't done that yet.
They're actually, they're actually talking about a county-wide ban.
Of plastic bags?
Allen County is considering that?
They are, yeah.
Yep.
The, the trash blowing over the fence and on the neighbors has become a real problem.
I see.
How they enforce it, I don't know, but that's, that's something that they're gonna be faced with. So then we, on high wind days, when they shut down, we're looking to go south, or?
We're gonna have to work out the logistics, so.
Or shut down ourselves.
I, I don't know. We're gonna have to work out the logistics. That's what, yeah. And I don't know, like I said, we're gonna have to work out the logistics. I don't know how early, if it's calm, whether they will be open super early before the wind gets blown. I, I mean, I don't know. We're gonna have to get it all, all worked out, so.
Okay. Well, we're gonna have to get some more trailers.
Yep, one hundred percent.
All right.
Anything else for me?
I have nothing.
Thank you, Eric.
All right.
Thank you. Uh, policy and procedure, mission statement.
Did you bring some?
Nope.
Okay.
I, I have to admit that I did not work on that.
Okay, well, I did, I did, you know, just a little general.
Did you get input?
No, I didn't. I thought I would just. No, I didn't, I thought I would just read these here, see if you liked it, see, give, give the, give people a week or two, and see what they have to say, and maybe somebody will reach out and say, add this, take this off, we don't like it at all, trash the whole thing, I don't know, so, so here's just a couple ones, a short ones, a little bit longer. Authentic Bourbon County Values Rural Lifestyle, a place where we enjoy the benefits of rural living while remaining connected to the opportunities of the nearby city. We honor our rich farmland, agricultural heritage, and livestock industry, recognizing their vital role in sustaining our community. At the heart of all our efforts is a deep respect for our taxpayers who contribute to the growth and well-being of our county. Our mission is to ensure these values, rural lifestyle, agriculture, and responsible fiscal stewardship work together harmoniously to build a prosperous, sustainable future for all residents. That's the winded version, long-winded. So I have a, Bourbon County values our rural lifestyle, our farmland, and our agricultural heritage, while recognizing the importance of responsible growth, working together while being good stewards of Bourbon County land and our taxpayers. We aim to build prosperous, sustainable future for our county. That's the short version, so.
I like them both.
So we can, we can just table this until-
So if you get more input?
Yep.
Okay. People wanna send in information, or call us, or whatever.
Say you like it, or hate it, or what have you, so we can table and tell, let's see, just say, I don't see a lot of things on the sixteenth, so June sixteenth, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
We, yeah, fifteenth, sixteenth.
Oh, yeah, fifteen, sixteen.
Okay, now, next on the item is me, with workman's compensation, I think I had had a motion that we tabled on that.
Yeah, you tabled till June second today.
Yeah, and I would like to withdraw that motion-
Okay.
-to consider additional pay with workman's compensation claims. At this time, I would like to add this discussion to our next budget work session.
Okay, so you wanna table it until budget time? Okay.
Till we have a work session on budget.
Okay. So we'll just put it at the bottom with no date, because we don't know when the budget work session is.
And then, next is Resolution by Commissioner Milburn for Personal Improvement Plan Correction, Corrective Action Plan, and Formal Written Notice Deviation Plan.
So let's table that until the twenty-third, because that did not, we didn't get that all titled up.
Okay.
So, been busy.
And then the next one is zoning discussion, and I would like to, I would move, the zoning advisory committee has requested for an extension of one week, they will have a meeting this week, and then present their recommendations on the June ninth, twenty-twenty-five meeting.
So we wanna table this to June?
They need an extension, I moved, yeah, I'm making a motion to extend their, because they were supposed to be here today.
Give them extension till the ninth?
Till the ninth.
Okay, a second. Your bar?
Yes.
Gilbert? Yes.
Okay, and now we are at public comments, June Bench, come on down. All right, ladies.
Do I talk in her language?
You introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is June Bench, and I'm a citizen here in Bourbon County, and I'm here today to bring some awareness to you guys, that I think that you guys and the citizens of this county have the right to know. Three years ago, a, there was a false evidence provided to the Sheriff's Department against me, it was false, and the deputy lied on the police report, and I'm here today, I went to jail, it's, you know, long story, blah, 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 but I'm here today to, I have concerns with the fact that, as far as I know, at last I heard, okay, it could be different now, last I heard that sheriff's deputy that lied on the police report and had me arrested, was still working here in Bourbon County.
Well, you, we're not gonna talk about any non-elected personnel here in this open meeting, that we're not gonna do that.
Okay, well, I thought I could say sheriff.
You can tell, you can say sheriff, he's elected.
Okay, okay.
Any of the others, you may not.
Okay, my bad, I'm sorry. So I would like, I'm just wondering why the sheriff knows about this, and just because you have a badge, you shouldn't be allowed to break the law. This deputy, if, oh, I'm sorry, 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 I'm so sorry, this is my first time, if I went to anybody's house, and I detained them, and I put them in a car, and I transported them somewhere, and I locked them in a room for a week, okay, what would happen to me? Kidnapping and all kinds of stuff, right, I'm gonna go to jail for a real long time, and that was done to me, and that was done to me.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna speak about the sheriff-
Uh-huh.
-you can, but you can't talk about non-elected personnel.
Well, that's what I did, I just said that that was done to me, so.
Yeah.
Oh, I just wanted to stop myself, again, it was a mistake, I'm sorry.
I guess my question is, is are you actively in a lawsuit with them?
No, no, absolutely not, no, I received a seventy-five thousand dollar, I took a seventy-five thousand dollar settlement to drop it, and, but still, there's nothing that says, and I have proof of that, if I'm allowed, if you guys wanted to see, I brought you each a copy. I just, I'm, this is, I can't get no more money, I'm not trying to get no more money. I went to the sheriff, before this ever went to litigation, I asked for help, and he wouldn't help me. I'm sorry, I just don't think that the people here have the right to know that there's some unethical things going on, and it's not right. Deputies should not be, I'm sorry, God, I'm so sorry, I didn't mean to do that, people, anybody, should not be able to use their position in whatever job they have to break the law, and I just, I have concerns about it, because I feel that how it was done to me, that every case that that particular person had anything to do with should be reopened. I'm wondering how many people are in jail to this day, that don't need to be, that's not supposed to be, and I, whether you guys do anything or not, I understand you can't do anything to the Sheriff's Department, I know you have no control, okay, but I would encourage you, if, if you care, and I hope you do, that you look into the evidence, it's all public record and everything, and I'm more than happy to give you anything I have, and you guys, if you see, once you see, I would hope that you guys, you guys can ask for an investigation to be done, and for something to happen. I tried, I have called FBI, KBI, you name it, I have called them, and they will not take a report of something like this from a citizen, it has to be done by some form of political whatever, is what I was told several times. Now, that could be a lie, I don't know, but that's what they told me, so I'm not sure.
So you filed a lawsuit, and the county had an attorney through insurance, and you had an attorney and it settled.
Mm-hmm, yes.
That's your means, that isn't this body that's your means, they can't do anything about it, you went through the legal process.
Oh, yeah, I'm not asking for nothing to be done, I'm just saying that the sheriff knows fully what was done to me, and that deputy, as far as I know, is, okay, I'm so sorry. All right, yeah, we're done, okay, we're done, I'm just saying, I won't, I won't ever bring this up again, I won't, I just felt like it was, this is not easy for me to do, you know, and it is scary, but you guys have the right to know that there's some unethical things going on, okay? That's all.
All right, thank you.
I'm trying to speak to your awareness.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Clint Walker, Public Works Discussion, County Assessor.
This won't take long.
All right, sir.
The only reason I'm coming forward, is I just wanted to publicly, we thank the Public Works Department for getting out there in timely manner, and getting the trees that were across the road, and they, there were several different spots that they took care of, and I just wanted to publicly say that.
Thank you.
But the second one is, I wanna address the assessor's office.
Okay.
And I will say that his staff was very professional, they come out and serve right by place, to see, I'm sure my taxes probably double, but maybe, maybe a little down, because I bragged on him.
The assessor coming out now, too?
But I wanna say his staff was very, they were very professional.
Thank you.
And they did a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir. And that was it. Okay, so moving on to new business, new commission districts, four and five term limits, Commissioner Milburn.
Okay, this could have been done, you know, well before I was here, I, from what I understand, they would have, they would have liked to have had this done, and this is a conflict of interest for me, because I'm on the ballot, so, really.
I think we need to, I mean, I know it's, maybe it should have been done sooner, but-
And I'm really not particular, so.
We gotta want a one- and three-year choice?
Yeah, and, and I'm, like I said, I'm not particular, but, you know, anybody, somebody could have a write-in, who knows, so really, I think that you could probably just write down some numbers on a paper and just draw for them, I honestly, what, there's no art to this, what's the deal?
Why don't you, can you just wait till you get the third commissioner appointed, and then decide at that point?
Yeah.
That might be, that might be better than theoretically-
What is there to decide, though, anyway? You know, I mean, what's the, what's mechanical about this, it's really just throw it out there.
Well, one person's gonna have to run again quicker than the other person.
Right, so, but-
Three, four, five.
That's four and five, and then if, then we'll have three, and then one.
Yeah, but it don't have to be a big deal, is what I'm saying, it can just-
Yeah, I just think that when we get three of us here, we'll have a better opportunity to-
Yeah, it can just be whatever, I don't think anybody's real concerned about it.
Okay, I would say table it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Trying to get things off the bottom of that there, David.
Well, I understand that, but that wasn't on there, yeah. Okay, let's, I mean, we'll be getting ahold of, I mean, as soon as-
Two months, or?
As soon as the governor receives the resignation, then the Republican Party will appoint the next person, so.
And that will take a-
That took a couple of weeks before, so.
It was pretty quick last time.
Yeah.
So do we wanna do on the thirtieth?
Yeah.
Okay. I like putting dates down there, keeps us kind of moving along.
Okay.
Okay, table.
Next on, are we good with that?
Yeah, table to the thirtieth.
Okay. Next on the agenda is Path of Ease Association, Jennifer Semheiser.
I'll sit by you.
Sure.
Do I do voice? Yeah. David, that. I'm sorry. Hey, I'm Jennifer Semheiser, I'm the founder of Path of Ease Association, Association here in town, I opened a Women and Children's Recovery House here in town, Redemption House, at the old boys' home, so, a little bit about me, I was born and raised here in town, was very, very depressed my entire life, which quickly turned into a drug addiction, alcoholism, was on the very dark side of Fort Scott for a very, very long time, ended up finally, enough went wrong in my life, that I went with a backpack to rehab in Lawrence, and then after rehab, learned about Oxford Houses, transitional housing, had no idea what they were, but I had no other option, so I moved into an Oxford House in Topeka, and then got my life together enough through that Oxford House, that I was able to buy my own home, had a good job, bought a car, in the process of my addiction, I lost my two older kids, so this past summer, I came back to visit them, and I had a fellow that I used to run around with, his mom reached out to me, and I'm just really in a hard spot, not understanding why her child couldn't get sober in Fort Scott, why he couldn't stay sober, what the, what the issue was, so I just talked to her about Fort Scott not having an option for recovery, I had no idea we had meetings in Fort Scott, the recovery community here is almost nonexistent, the drug problem here, on the other hand, is horrible, so, I was talking to her about not having any solutions in town, so I decided that day I was going to sell my house and stay in Fort Scott, and open recovery housing, and offer solution to people to be able to get, to get sober, and doing that, I have learned a whole bunch of things, one of which, we don't have transportation for recovery in Fort Scott, all of our transportation services end at six PM, our recovery meetings are all at eight o'clock, Celebrate Recovery is seven to nine, that is through the week, there is not transportation services on Sundays, all of my ladies in my home are required to go to some kind of faith-based organization, that I have been taking multiple trips to get them to, I take multiple trips to go to AA, NA, Celebrate Recovery Church.
All the while, holding down a full-time job.
I do, work a full-time job also, there is a huge Recovery Fest campout coming up this next weekend, that is, you know, things like that are vital for my girls to be able to do, to get a community of other sober people, so that they can have hope, and they can have other people they can turn to, different resources that my entire house would like to go to, that I can't get them to, we will not be going to that, because, you know, it's an independence, and I currently have five women, and we have three full-time children, three part-time children, that cannot fit in my truck to even go to Pittsburgh to do anything as a house, so, trying to get some funding from the, what's it called? Yeah, but that's not the official name, the Municipal Kansas Fights Addiction Fund, is that right? Ask me, I didn't even look at the paper. So, this fund, the pharmaceutical companies have been sued for the opioid crisis, and those funds have to be utilized for recovery services of some kind, which, to my knowledge, there are not many options in Fort Scott for those monies to go to, housing is one of them, which my house qualifies for, transportation is also one of them, and their big thing is having wraparound services, so my home being open to addicts, having that transportation to get them to meetings, to get them to treatment centers, to get them to work back from work, so that they have all of the services they need to be able to get the skills they need to function on their own eventually.
One of the advantages of her home is that the-
One of the advantages of her home is that the, uh, women are allowed to bring their children once they meet the criteria being done so. Those possibilities are very, very few. So we'll bring the children so that they can adjust to living with their children, taking care of their children, seeing if they go to school, et cetera, while they also hold down a job, which is also a criteria for the women to be living in her house. So you're here today to ask?
For $30,000 out of that, um, fund to be utilized to purchase, um, a recovery transportation van so that I can transport my ladies, um, to the different meetings that they need to go to, to get to work so that they can, you know, pay off fines and they can get their license back and, you know, get back to being independent, successful members of society.
Does Bourbon County allocate any of those monies, Denny?
We got.
How much do you have?
Eighty-one thousand.
And that, that fund. I am, and that fund will also, to my knowledge, be coming for the next 18 years um, to cover different things of that sort. And that funding only has a couple of those settlements in there. And there's also, the biggest settlement still hasn't been taken care of, so that money will continue to grow and be there for.
There'll be money coming in every year when every county receives it.
Not this much, though, I think this is a little bit of buildup.
Yeah, that's since 2022.
Yeah.
But right now, we have no other recipients of it.
And what's the name of your 501(c)(3)?
Path of Ease Association.
Can this money go to the mental health that we have to allocate funds to?
Um, it could, okay, yes.
What was the question?
If, if this fun, if this money could go, we have to allocate funds to mental health as well. And we have a resolution, a pretty old one. So they've already asked for money in our, you know.
Who, mental health?
Yes, yes, and so, so that is another organization that this money can go to, but I'm. What is it, Bob?
You can repeal that.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
And I, I would like to see that resolution brought.
But I mean, that's.
Yeah, next week, let's, let's, let's look at that resolution. If we could.
As long as she's, as long as she's a 501(c)(3) and she provides that to the clerk.
And this is right here in the.
She'd probably.
Do you have their support?
So, as of right now, I've had a lot, um, transitional housing is very, very new to Fort Scott. This is the first ever women's children's home. A lot of people have been very, very supportive. Um, a lot of bigger, like, the churches to be that umbrella 501(c)(3), um, not knowing how they're ran, um, want to be supportive but not responsible. I also am learning the grant side of things as I go. So grant funding has not come in for me as of now, working on that. I work a full-time job.
Hi.
I, I, I funded most of opening the recovery home on my own.
So you're, you're over there on Heilmann?
I am.
At that place, okay.
Uh, we have our first, um, fundraising opportunity coming up on July 5th with the thing that the, the city is doing, red, white, and barbecue.
Kid's zone.
Or something.
College campus.
Yeah, we're gonna be running a, a kid's zone, uh, for that. So that's our, our first dip into that kind of fundraising, so.
I have, so the nonprofit has a board of directors. I also have an auxiliary committee for the house and doing all of the, I am one person, it takes a lot of work. And, and like I was telling people just a couple of days ago, um, I would, I don't want to do something like this on my own. I am not better than any other addict in my home. I also have a chance of relapse and I want my home to be secured for anybody else needing it, um, in that chance that something happens to me. So I have auxiliary committee, um.
And a board.
Board for the nonprofit. There's also a board, um, the Boys Youth Home that I answer to also, so. A lot of trusted advisors, thank goodness.
If you all are inclined to, uh, allocate some of that money, generally the best way would be not to give her the money, or the, the home the money, but to have her provide you bids for what she needs. Sounds like any transportation?
Yes.
I think I've seen a picture of a van here, where they found a van.
It might be better if, if that was, if you were to do that.
Oh, you got that?
That you paid for that.
Buy a van.
501(c)(3).
Okay, entitle it in the, in the.
Yes.
Okay.
If you're inclined to do it.
Okay.
Is that it, Bree?
This is at, um, Jay Hatfield in Frontac. So I, um, looked at different vans around here to see, um, what kind of pricing they were, um, what I could do. So this is at Jay Hatfield. There was another 15-passenger van, I believe, in Kansas City. Two different, this is a Chevy, that was Ford. I sent a picture to a mechanic friend of mine, like, hey, what's my best option? Cause I'm not a mechanic. Um, he said that this van are more mechanically sound than the other one. That this would be a better option for what I was utilizing it for.
What is the, what is the, the cost to where we'd have to send it out to bid rather than just buying it? Is there a threshold? Yes, yes. If we were to purchase it out of these funds.
More than 10,000, but I think if she's already sought the bids, you could probably just buy it.
Okay, and, and are we authorized?
If that's what you want to do.
Well, we're just looking at options here, right? So are we authorized to, to make that purchase and title it in their name? The, the, the not-for-profit's name?
Yeah, we don't want it in our name.
Well, I know that. I just didn't know if we had to, uh, allocate the money for, to the not-for-profit and let them buy it, so.
You could authorize them to purchase it and use the opioid, opioid settlement funds to purchase it. However, if you trade that in or get rid of that van in the future, you'd have to come back and get permission from the commissioners since they paid for it.
So what, so going about it that way, um, is that just for cost of the van? Or would that cover costs of like the insurance I need to get for the van, any of that type of?
Can we just put to the, to her 501? Can we just make a donation, right? Out of that fund?
For this purpose, yeah.
For, for the van and expenses?
If you want to. I mean, it doesn't sound like you have many people asking for those monies. And they, they were paid to help addiction.
Right.
Stuff, so. If you guys are satisfied that, not, not to be offensive, but if you're satisfied this is legitimate and, and, and all that, I, I'm not from here, but, uh, it sounds like it is.
It's okay, you'll learn. I'm, I'm very loud.
I applaud you, but if you're satisfied that it's all legitimate, then that's probably exactly what those funds were supposed to be used for.
Okay.
Are these the people on your board, um, that you printed here?
Yep.
Okay, it looks like you have several people. Typically, in this case, I would check some references. Typically, I would check some references, I would call some of these people. And, and check and double and verify.
I say you got two of them here, probably.
Oh, Anne is here?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Mark McCoy is here.
Mark, you on that board?
And Don Tucker.
And Don Tucker.
What do you guys mind? What do you guys mind?
Well, he is.
What, what are we? I hate to, I hate to ask this, but what are we into mental health on for this? How much are we into them on this? Out of that settlement? What are they asking for?
Uh, their budget?
Do you say?
Mental health, I don't know, I think there's just.
That was like 80,000.
Ninety-five, I think.
Yeah. We're on hold, right?
Yes.
That doesn't come from that.
It can.
It comes from tax.
It can.
Yeah.
I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna cross the Ts and dot the Is, I would ask that you read through, uh, what the settlement does go for exactly. And, and just.
I agree.
Confirm.
I agree.
That you can spend it. I mean, mental health, that seems like a no-brainer, but.
Do you want them? How are you on this? I mean.
Well, I, I just wanted to hear from a couple of the board members that.
Okay. Uh, any, you want to talk to them now, or you want to talk to them?
Unless you're on table until next week.
You know, talk to them.
They're here now, I mean, that's what I said, I would call them, check references, but they said they're here now, so let's do it right now.
So, uh, my name's Mark McCoy and I would attest that she is operating this entity. Uh, I, I'm, uh, the chairman and the treasurer of the Fort Scott Youth Home.
Okay.
And, uh, there was quite an amount of time put into allowing her to lease the facility for this use.
Wonderful.
And so, uh, the thing that I would suggest to you is like your attorney is saying, is that the funds would go directly to the dealer to purchase this, so that way you're not transferring the funds to her. I don't think it's a donation, I think it's money that is allocated. So I don't know, you're talking about a donation, you're talking about allocation.
Yeah, but I, you know, cause she had mentioned, you know, we got in, you guys got insurance you gotta deal with and, and probably fuel expenses and stuff like that, so.
So, I mean, the, but I thought you were concerned about that.
No, I'm not.
You know, she has a board and they review her expenses.
I don't, I don't, yeah, I don't know about the.
He was saying if we were concerned about it, we're, we're, I mean, I know. I know part of this board.
I'm new, I'm brand new.
Yeah, yeah, so that's what I'm doing, I don't know what David's doing, so.
The, the board helps with the allocation of expenses.
And then who was the other person that you said was here?
Don Tucker.
Don Tucker.
Come on up.
Thanks, Mark.
John? He doesn't hear well, so you need to go up and speak.
Me neither, Don.
So, um, the asking price for the van is 23.7. Um, and the extra expenses would have, would go for insurance to get the van, um, legal, tags, fuel expenses.
For, yeah, for a year, hopefully, yeah.
Hello, Don.
Hi.
I'm just looking for a reference for this lady's organization here, for this not-for-profit.
Yes, well, I would sort of give her a reference.
Thanks, Don.
I think, I think what she does is fitting exactly into what the government is asking you to do. And so, uh, and there's no other entity that's come up in town to do this. And, uh, I don't foresee any thing coming up to do that.
Okay, thank you.
So basically, this is it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Don.
Thank you.
All right. I, I, I'm, I'm pleased with that, usually I would table things a week and I would come back after checking with, with people. Pretty stringent on that, and so, um, you brought your people here.
I have a very supportive tribe.
So, yeah.
Very supportive tribe.
And so, so I am, I am okay with that, and if David's okay with that, then I can, uh, Susan had some notes over here to all it was gonna go to.
23.7 for the purchase.
Okay.
And then sales tax. Insurance for a year and leftover.
Let's get an number. Let's get an number.
Yeah.
Should be examined.
Yeah, it will be. Yeah.
You'll have to pay property tax, probably.
Yes.
Yeah, so then tags and insurance and fuel. It makes me so sad that so many people don't.
You know, next year it won't be as big.
We talked about, um, creating a, a separate bank account for these, these funds to come out of. Have you done that yet, or is that still, did we think that was a good idea, or?
I don't know. If we have, if we have to present the expenses to them for them to allocate the money, checking accounts gonna go to you again.
So let's do, let's do just the purchase of the vehicle right now, and then when you guys work out the entrance and stuff, how about you just come back? Is that okay? That way we can read in it, into it to make sure it can cover those things as well. Is that okay?
Okay.
What are you, what are you recommending?
They want.
Well, I recommend we give them the price for the van and then they come back and ask for something. For their insurance.
Rather than us get involved in their, in their van and stuff, that we would just give them operating, you know, and then next year won't be as big because we won't be getting as much, but we already got some. I would just, I'm making a motion that we give them $50,000 for their organization and let them decide how, you know, they're gonna buy a van, they're gonna have gas.
Why don't you, um, allocate 50,000 and, as she needs funds, um, allow her to bring what she needs to me as like a, in a, kind of like a receipt form or a quote form, and then we release it based on that.
I just was trying to save the work, yeah. I mean, they got a pretty good board and stuff like that, so.
Well, so is, is that going to be the same process for when they get insurance, when she has to go over here and pay tax and taxes? Okay, so she will. Yeah. Okay.
She'll give you a purchase order or purchase requisition of some kind, and then you will pay the entity.
Yeah, we can do that for her.
So we'll allocate, so my motion would be allocate 50,000?
And you have how much, 81?
Just name her entity in your motion. If you would, please name her not-for-profit in your motion.
Yeah, uh, for, uh, Ease of Pass, or Path of Ease Association.
Explain to them what ease means.
Um, end addiction stigma everywhere. So, when I came here and started this, I, um, found out through meeting with the board of the house that I had to have a business to be able to get into the house. So, so I got myself an LLC that does no good for me now. Um, and then when I went to file for 501(c)(3), realized that you can't use the same name as an LLC because they use the same name databank. So I had to come up with something completely different, so, um.
I like it.
I don't, but my treasurer told me not to.
There's just been so much chatter, David, could you please just make your motion again?
I motioned that we allocate 50,000 dollars from the opioid settlement fund for Path of Ease Association for, uh, travel expenses and other expenses, uh, through, through the clerk's office.
A second. Yes. You're back.
Yes.
You have my contact.
Okay, you did it.
I'm gonna go cry now.
Yeah, yeah, she will. Thank you.
She will.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for all you did.
So much, so much. Lots more to come.
Thank you.
Thanks.
As long as these opioid settlements keep coming, we keep coming back.
I'm working on opening a men's house also, as soon as I can find, um, an actual dwelling to do that, so.
Tense.
Tense, we got enough of them.
That's right, I think she's right about that.
Okay, so, next on the list, Tri Valley, 2026 budget. You guys gotta try to top that.
Thank you.
Good luck on that one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, uh, my name's Bill Fiskus, I'm the CEO for Tri Valley Developmental Services. Looking at the top page, our request is 55,000, which is what we've requested and received in the last several years. Second page is dealing with our services. Um, the top is our mission statement, uh, then followed by our geographic service area. We provide services in eight counties, including Bourbon County. Um, the services we provide, dehabilitation. We have, uh, service centers in, uh, we have five service centers in our, um, area. Shenute, Iowa, Fort Scott, Niederschaefer, Moline. At the centers, we provide activities outside of an individual's private resident or other residential living arrangement. And we also provide residential habilitation. In our eight counties, we have 35 living settings. Eight of those settings are in Bourbon County. And what we do with residential habilitation, we provide up to 24 hours a day to live successfully in the community. Next page, case management. Case manager works on the person's behalf assuring the continuity of services and support. And we also have our numbers that we provide service and support to. They have 37 in Bourbon County, and then we also list the total agency. Residential have 25 in Bourbon. and then we also list the total agency. Residential have twenty-five in Bourbon County, case management fifty-seven, waiting list twenty-one. Some of the waiting list people have been on the list for ten-plus years. It's
Been on the list for how?
Ten-plus years.
And what's the, I mean, what, what?
Waiting on funding from the state.
Waiting for space, or?
No, just funding.
Funding, okay.
Then we also have forty-two employees from Bourbon County. We receive county funding from Allen, Bourbon, Yeshon, Woodson Counties, and I've listed what we received from the other ones as well. Next page are all of our board members, and then I highlighted the Bourbon County Board Members, Lindsay Madison and Steve Sewell. Then we also have a vacant position as well.
I think we, in one of our meetings, they appointed somebody from the commission. Does that normally happen?
It does not, but that, I mean, it's okay if they do.
Would you be interested in a commissioner?
That's fine.
You guys don't need to re-discuss that. It's all, everybody, well, there's, we're going to have to redo all the boards once you get the new person, so.
Okay.
Then the last page, I wanted to give an update on our Community Developmental Disability Organization, a little bit of the history. On May first, nineteen-seventy-five, Tri Valley became incorporated and started providing services to individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities, community service providers. So, we provided service to those individuals. Likewise, we just celebrated our fiftieth anniversary, May first, so had a big event and all of that, so. Twenty years after that, the Developmental Disability Reform Act was created, which created Community Developmental Disability Organization, CDDO, is what we call them. Kansas Department of Aging and Disability Services and the counties appointed the CDDOs for, for each of the counties. Tri Valley was selected and designated for Allen, Bourbon, Yeshon, Woodson. So, we, and we still are the CDDO of those four counties. A CDDO, what they do is provide single point of application, eligibility determination, and referral for individuals and families to obtain services through the IDD waiver. So, CSP provides the services, CDDO is like single point of entry, and, and they, you know, oversee all of that. At that point, thirty years ago, we hired two employees to fulfill the tasks associated with that. So, right now, Tri Valley is both CDDO and CSP. Through the recent years, there's developed a feeling that there's a inherent conflict of interest doing both. So, CMS, Centers for Medicaid and Medicare, are pushing the state to do something about that, and they've been doing that for a few years. So, we're in the process of meeting with them and other affiliates, providers, advocates, to come up with different solutions. Once we do that, then we'll be back seeing you guys.
Okay.
Because you guys ultimately, and the state, both ultimately decide what goes on with the CDDO.
Right. Well, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next up would be the City of Fort Scott nine-one-one agreement.
Yeah, so I don't know if the city has reached out to anybody else, but I've spoke, I don't even think they reached out to me. I might have spoke to them on, on another, you know, talking about something else, and that came up, and, and so the, the nine-one-one.
Are we going to have a discussion on that?
Well, a, a little one, if you don't mind.
Okay, can I, let's take a recess real quick, five minutes.
Yeah, sounds good.
Thank you.
Does the city do dispatching for the Fort County? What do we pay them?
A thousand a year.
It's a lot cheaper than running it. Yeah. Okay.
You're welcome.
You're not even paying ten percent. She did that, she had a coordinate together this past
I mean, I've got a job with that, I don't know. I mean, I've got a job with that, I don't know.
The city could tell them.
Yeah.
This room was a lot more full, didn't, y'all just, everybody leave? Were they people that were giving presentations, and then they left? Is that where all the people went?
You guys need people to listen to this?
No, I think you're good, Bob. Thank you.
I mean, I'll stay.
Nope, nope.
That's a pretty good deal, though. How's you?
It does sound really good. Yeah, I just, I know that.
A lot of people don't know that counties have that run, so I don't think we've used any of ours.
Yeah, I mean, it is really nice. It's just that I didn't know about it, and so I just wanted to verify.
And then the second batch, I was like, okay.
You're going to get, we got a big one that'll pay you.
Purdue hasn't paid it all yet.
I'll call you tomorrow on this, I don't know what.
Yeah.
I'll call you too, so it should be good.
I don't even know what that is, Bob. It's my report. Sounds good. Okay, perfect. Love it. Bye.
So, you guys, one thing about that van, it has fifteen people, and it's going to have a CDO. Allen County has like, you guys have public transportation?
We do, but it's, like she said, it's not
Like state funded senior, and that's on the side.
No.
Really? There's state money.
How many, how many entities do we have come asking?
She said lots of them.
Three, is that three?
Two or three.
But they don't
Yeah, have a good night.
Bye, Bob.
See you.
She's right.
All right. I guess we're ready to go. Back in session.
All right, so on this nine-one-one, Brad has talked to me about it briefly, about how, you know, we, the city handles nine-one-one for us right now. I think under statute, we'll have to read it again. It's the county's maybe there. But we have an agreement with the city to pay them fifty thousand for them to handle the services, and then we provide the space. And Brad's wanting to do some, some different trade things, has some different ideas. But we, we need to loop in, if, if it does come to the table, we need to loop in every entity that it's going to affect. You know, public works, if we're doing any kind of thing, we need to make sure it works out with their current schedule, with their current help, and, you know, make sure that we actually have the capabilities to do what they're asking to do. I just don't want to, you know, make any any agreements without bringing anybody else in that they, that they want, might want to loop in. But Brad didn't come today, so we can go ahead and just table this indefinitely until Brad calls.
Well, we need to
Oh, it is, so he may call soon, so, but we'll let him put it back on there.
Well, now, we had a joint session with them, work session with the city here a while back, at their invite.
Okay.
So, it's, it's our turn, so.
Okay.
So, sometime we might want to be thinking about doing that, and that could be part of the discussion there, so.
Okay.
But, yeah, I'd have to know what they're, what they're wanting to discuss.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All right, but I just wanted to get it out there, that they were talking about that a little bit, so.
Okay. Next is courthouse repairs.
Okay, so we have a couple of employees here. I think Shane stayed, and then if, David, if they, if they want to talk about it. If not, we can just kind of talk about it. I have the little bid book here. It's totally up to you if you guys want to do it or not. If you want to speak about the repairs that you're seeing, that you think are needed.
I've seen the overall plan. It's a lot of money, about nine-hundred thousand total.
Yeah, the, the one was around a hundred, I think.
The one was five-hundred thousand.
Yeah, the one that we're really needing is about a hundred.
The, the elevator.
That elevator was for windows, too.
Windows, yeah.
That was impossible. We don't have that kind of money. Peerless, even often is windows for half price.
Okay, if you guys just want to talk about the state of the courthouse, and what your, what brought you to this determination that you think that you need, it needs to go out to, just kind of getting it out there.
We've tried for, what, eighteen years?
Four years.
To get it done. Last was, two years ago, we had a chunk that big fall out on the front porch, but it hit somebody. That would have been terrible problem.
Okay.
There's, you know, we get the freezing, we get the, the water, the ice. You go upstairs, and you can get up on the elevator shaft and look at, then you put your hand inside the joints of those ten-thousand-pound blocks.
Okay.
It's deferred maintenance.
Yeah, and so I read a little bit of, of your bid, and I had talked to you guys independently of that as well, and it seems as if what you're kind of needing to get done is some, some, some wash, some tuck pointing, some waterproofing, some window sealing, and then some coat on the window. Is that basically what you're wanting to send out for bid?
Yeah, what Jason put in that package.
I know, and this packet, we're going to have to talk about that independently, because this packet for that kind of work is a little bit excessive, in my opinion.
But this building is a national historic contributing building.
But depending on where you're getting the money.
Right, but there's rules for that, so we may have to do little checks.
Well, aren't them bids like two years old that's in there?
No, we had him do a new bid document.
Yeah, but this is the bid document just for, just for that, you know, and that, for a, for a tuck pointing job like that, I think this is a bit excessive.
But it's, if you read Mid Continental's bill, there's far more than tuck pointing. That's, that's not even
Well, when it hasn't went out to bid yet, then we don't have a bid from
No, we had it go out to bid. We've had it go out to bid several times.
Yeah, I've seen a bid that's been, the one I read was a bid that's been there for two years.
Every time we've had it done, it's just been kicked down the road.
And past practices show where we have used the same AIA document to do bids for the county because of statutory obligations that we have. So, and I brought some old roof replacements.
Yeah, the roof's a good example of why the documents exist.
Performance bonds, things like that, where we, how we, we've always done, I mean, we've done it this way because it protects the county from any kind of liability.
I do understand that, but, but I think that, that we, we need to not be so stringent that it, that it excludes bidders. And I think that when I see recommendation, that's just what it means, is recommendation. It does not mean mandatory. So, I think that we need to put together something that allows, there are plenty of people in our community that do this kind of work, that allows them to bid.
I agree.
Well, and we've put this out for bid, and they never bid on it. We had somebody bid on it.
How long ago was that?
Oh, with the front porch example.
Yeah, but I mean, right now, I mean, the last bid I seen was twenty-twenty-two.
Two years ago, three years ago.
Yeah.
MCM quit doing work. People don't have the crews big enough to do it. You don't want this to be a two-year project.
Yeah, but I just say we need, we're going to need fresh bids anyway, so.
But the bid document covers, I mean, that's a professional engineer. It protects us.
It puts the bid document out for the work that needs to be done.
And it says the, what the expectation of it, for example, the roof, when we did that.
Did you see the bid document?
Yeah, I got a copy.
Half a ream of paper, and then the back.
Well, but some of that's not the bid document. Some of that's just that building, whatever, the thing on top. That's just the building ten-year thing.
That's the ten-year plan.
When we did the roof back in two thousand and five, first one.
It's still big.
I was going to say, we, we need to
They sprayed hot oil on the roof.
Yeah.
Off the building, into the treasurer's office, ruined a thirty-thousand-dollar printer, ruined several computers.
We have to make sure we have the money, and we know where it's coming from.
We do have the money, but it's the bonds.
It's coming out of the sales tax fund to, to repair the courthouse.
It's, that's part of the sales tax fund.
I am
The jail sales tax
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not hacklimated all the money yet.
It is the jail sales tax fund that is, is it allows to
Maintain the courthouse.
Maintain the courthouse.
That was part of the vote.
Part of the vote. In the, in the actual statute, it says that.
I'd have to see the, okay, do we have those, that documentation on that? I, I mean, I have never seen it.
On what, the sales tax?
Yeah, yeah.
It's statute.
Why is it called a vote?
Okay.
Because it went to a vote.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
It was intended to build the jail, and then within the statute, it also states that it can be used for operations, which past commissions have used that. That's why that levy has dropped, because they used that to drop the levy.
Okay.
And then they also use, they've set money aside for the repairs of the courthouse, because they knew that there was deferred maintenance.
Okay.
So, that's what it's being used for, or that's what has been discussed in the past, but that, those funds can be used for that.
Okay.
From a financial perspective, I would pay the bonds down quicker. But there is need, there are needs. It's either
Okay, well, I, I don't have a problem with seeing us go ahead and put this back out for bid.
Well
And see what we get, see what we get, and then we'll get an amount and, and from that, but
I think when you put out for bid, you already have to have your strict stipulations, do you not?
That's what that bid document is.
That document's full of that.
Yeah.
Now, Jason, the engineer, was going to come here on the twenty-third to discuss the document, and why everything that's in there is in there. They just got done doing Memorial Hall. The, the bonds, the insurance, the workman's comp, all that is state statute. I mean, Susan's got the state statute that says that you have to have those things. Had we not had that kind of a document back in two thousand and five, we'd have lost fifty thousand dollars' worth of equipment. Because, I mean, they sprayed
So, the engineer is coming to do what?
Jason's the guy who wrote it, so he's coming, Jason Dickman from the city, that's their Earl's engineering guy. He's going to come and discuss that document on the twenty-third.
Okay.
And discuss
Because we paid him to do the document.
Yeah.
Hold on, I'm, I'm reading the, I'm, I'm reading the thing here.
And you might reach out to Jay Hall, because he, he talks about what's best practices for governments. So, you don't get in situations like what they did.
Well, I don't intend to get us in a situation, but I also think that this is an excessive for a hundred-thousand-dollar job.
It's been more like a hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar job. If you go off of the original Mid Continental build from a couple of years ago, it was about a hundred-and-eighty thousand without windows.
So, there, he's coming to talk about this.
The document is to how and why that is used.
Okay.
And that's standard for this kind of stuff. It's, I mean, even when I worked in the corporate world, it was standard practice to use those kind of documents, because that's your only, that's how you lay out what your expectation of the work is.
I've got bid documents, this was for roof replacements, and they used the same AIA form in two thousand and four and five, and then also again in two thousand and thirteen, there was an agreement.
And I, yeah, and I, I still, you know, if we put it out there, even in its current form, it's still going to be more, there's an opportunity for, for people to look at it that hadn't looked at it two years ago, or
Yeah, that's why we did it, so we could get it bid out.
It was mainly just for quotes to kind of have an idea, I think, at that time.
So.
And the scope of work, we based it off what Mid Continental bid, for him to do that document. But we're also coming up on roof, too. The roof on this building is
Elevator.
Elevator. The elevator's going to get shut off by the state if we don't spend about another hundred-and-thirty thousand on it. So, you buy a new elevator for a million and a half dollars, or we fix what we have to make it get by for another fifteen years.
So, tell me, give a cost. We don't know what we can do come twenty-twenty-six, or even off this statute.
He's probably done a bid estimate, hasn't he?
The elevator, the elevator stuff, we already did, so we knew what it was. We've done stage one out of three stages.
Right. And stage two is behind.
Right, we should be doing stage two now. Stage three, if we don't have it done, probably mid-year, next year, they'll shut it off. And I mean, that's, that can't happen. The problem is, is nobody's done anything to the building when they've been told about it, and they've been told about it for twenty years. I mean, David and I have sat here, and now Lynn O'Hara went up on the roof and looked, and is very aware of like some of the problems.
I think there, I think, I think this, I've read some of this, and I think there's more in this than what really has to I think there, I think, I think this, I've read some of this, and I think there's more in this than what really has to be.
But there's not more in that because the reason it's there is that's what our expectation of fixing this building is. I mean, this isn't our house.
Who's our expectation? Who said that expectation? David and I are the commissioners.
But you have to follow SHPO, the State Historic Preservation. You have to follow them guidelines, you have to follow the guidelines.
No, we're not taking any historic money.
No, but you still have to follow the guidelines. They're there for that reason, to keep the, the integrity of the building intact. This building is a contributing building to a national historic district.
Okay, well, you won't, you won't mind if I double check?
No, go ahead. That's why we're having the engineer come here, because he's the subject matter expert. No, I mean, we can have two. These people, they don't do this lightly. This is, I mean, I've seen these things that are that thick. It, it's purposeful for a reason. It's, now, there may be some stuff in there that he hasn't like cleared out, certain things about, we can't seal this building. We could seal the statue out there because the county didn't pay for it. Certain things you can't do, certain things you can do. I mean, I've been, I was on design review board for ten years for the downtown buildings. I've been in HPA for fifteen years. I mean, this stuff is there for a reason. It's to protect us from liability and to assure us that-
Liability of-
Liability of somebody pouring hot tar off our building and running fifty thousand dollars' worth of equipment. I mean, you, you have to have a bond that would cover the job. And if the job's a two hundred thousand dollar job, they have to have the insurance to cover that. They have to have workman's comp to work for the county. I mean, there's just, there's rules.
Well, I understand rules, but I think that work can excessive.
We dismissed the counselor too soon, so. I, I would say, let's let him look at this.
He's got a copy of it.
He's got a copy, so we'll definitely wait till we get the third person back.
Yeah, this is really just to get this out here and get it, you know, let people know that it's being talked about.
Yeah.
Yeah, you guys are welcome to go out.
Look at the sales tax statute stuff, too.
Yeah, we really-
And we can take you guys up-
Look at all that stuff and make sure-
I'll pass. I don't really want to go up to the roof.
Well, there's a safe area, you can go up on top of the elevator where you just climb up a little ladder and you can see what's wrong. That's the one section you can just go up and look.
You going up the ladder, David?
No.
Me neither.
I just got a minute.
So we can go take, we can go take some pictures.
Can I interject just a minute? I saw the roof. I was on the street, my voice, the doctor didn't think I needed it. Anyway, I was on, I did climb up on the roof, we didn't expect it. And this discussion's been going on for years, I mean, years. We're looking at probably ten years that we've been talking about that. One of the dangers that I've seen, not long, not, you know, not the aesthetics and all that stuff, is the parapet is in very bad shape. And one of the things that could happen, and I, and I looked at the, the parapet, is one could fall off. You know, you get a storm or anything like that, it could actually fall off because they're in that poor repair. So repairs are needed and I don't care how they get to it. You know, it's, it has to be done, it has to be done right. And running a business, I've done, done many times, is you do have to have the insurance and the bonds and the-
Nobody's saying they don't have to have insurance and bonds. But there are additional things in there, okay?
Well, there is, you're going to sandblasting, you're gonna do the point tuck, but there's a lot of critical stuff up there that has to be done, too, on top.
Yes, I do understand.
Yeah, well, I just thought, you know, there was a discussion about-
And if it was so urgent ten years ago, then they should have done it then.
Well, it has been, and you know, and like I say, it just gets worse with time. You don't have point tuck.
That's right. I mean, I work on the roof a lot and have been up there, and I used to be comfortable sitting on the parapet to work. I won't do it anymore.
No, I wouldn't do it either.
Because it, it scares me that just having an extra-
You'd be comfortable crawling around it, too.
Yeah.
That's my two cents.
Thank you.
All right, so we're not gonna kick the can down the road, but we're gonna have to. We're gonna have to definitely look at it.
Well, and we finally have a mechanism we can maybe pay for, at least part.
Yeah.
Well, I gotta, you know, we're gonna look at all, all angles on this.
The window sealing, though, is something that we really need of because once winter comes along when you're here, you'll see. You can stand in the bathroom, it snows into the bathrooms, snows into offices. So they were gonna provision to re-glaze everything and then seal the, the envelope, seal the window envelope.
Okay.
And so what date do we want to talk about this again?
Well, Jason was available on the twenty-third.
He's gonna be here on the twenty-third. I say thirtieth, that gives, gives what we can get from them, and then it gives Bob a chance to take a look at it. And we do more, do more research on our own, so.
Jason can go through and remove things that we don't want to do or, you know. Because I talked to Pete about it, you know, and he's done that kind of work, and he would be comfortable doing that kind of work, too. But the bond thing, some people don't have those, some people do. You know, I'm not a contractor, I don't understand.
No, there's a two hundred thousand dollar bond to do this job.
That's right.
Do what?
I'm not gonna put a two hundred thousand dollar bond to do this job.
But you could do the job nonetheless. That's right, so it would exclude that company that could very well do the job.
If, if you guys are comfortable saying that we don't need a two hundred thousand dollar bond, that'd be up to you. But if the job's gonna pay-
And that's all I'm saying, is this thing is recommendations, this isn't mandatory. Recommendation does not mean mandatory. I'm not trying to exclude half of the masons in this county by putting down this thing just as you wrote it, okay?
May I just give a perspective?
Yes, you may.
The perspective I'd like to provide is just that when I took the opportunity to be the city manager, I needed to get up to speed on these ordinances and statutes. And as a businessperson for forty years, it was extremely frustrating, extremely frustrating, because I would say, let's do this. And I was then told that there are statutes and there's ordinances. And all I'm suggesting is that everybody make sure that they completely understand the statutes and the ordinances. And you talked about this person probably getting that legal advice and I know there's other phone numbers and assets that you can use to call.
I absolutely agree.
Yeah, so, I mean, and you're gonna meet again?
That's right.
Yeah, and it's not about not wanting Pete to do it, but if the law says it must be this, then it is-
I, I think that we're a little in excess of the law here on some of these things.
I'm sorry.
We're in excess of the law on some of these things.
And you also have to realize that's the entire job.
And you're not the lawyer, and you're not the final decision maker. You were voted to run to the best interest of the community, but that's why seeking out the best legal advice is-
Yes, and that's what we intend to do, but we're gonna get this started.
I'm, I'm not saying you're not, I'm just trying to provide-
If you break the job up, like, say you could break the job up, Pete and I talked about that, breaking it up into the tuck pointer.
I think, I think, I think we're heading in the right direction. I think moving it down to the thirtieth, we'll, we'll hear from that engineer, we'll also hear back from Bob, give us a chance to do our own research.
That's right.
No, because I would love for Pete to be able to do it, he does awesome work. That's why HPA paid for him to come out here and do this statute. And I mean, you can go out there and look at that statute, what he did, so he knows what he's doing. If we can break it up in pieces, then we won't have to have those high number bonds or whatever. Mid Continental did it at almost two hundred thousand dollars. And if somebody walked away and didn't do the job, you know, it's to protect our county finances.
Don't kick the can down the road. We're, we're, we're not gonna do that. I mean, you know, we can only do with what money we got, but we're gonna, we're gonna try to get this figured out. I looked at the, the previous bids and stuff like that and, and all the, the projects that need to get done and, you know. Regardless of what we, what our opinions are on this courthouse, it's gotta be here, so.
Probably the most important part to do.
You've been fixing it up for years, so get some more duct tape, Dave.
If the stone starts falling apart, it just, it just continues.
We just need to watch, I mean, I mean, until we can get-
We don't need to look at this as an all or nothing kind of deal. We can, we can do it a priority kind of deal and break it down. It don't have to be like all of that.
Watch our safety stuff, watch our entryways and make sure that that stuff isn't getting worse so that we don't get somebody hurt.
Yeah.
That's a perfect example.
Well, I mean, even, even city, even city hall, I mean, you know, we, city halls had to have their stuff refit, you know.
Well, it's not very old.
No.
I mean, this building started, this building was nineteen thirty when it opened, so.
Well, this building was the seventies.
This one, yeah, this one.
I remember, we were in school and all this stuff happened, so. One correctional, got to make a tour of it. Okay, so I appreciate you guys, thank you. All right, item NRP discussion, Commissioner Milburn.
Okay, so.
Is Mr. Quick coming on board for that?
Okay, so a couple of years ago, we decided, or the commissioners before you decided to bump our NRP program from five years residential to ten years residential, okay? We don't do, there are other counties that do ten years on residential, but they usually have a graded. So it may start out at, you know, a ninety-five percent, and then each year it goes down, the amount of rebate that you get back. Ours doesn't do that, it's ninety-five percent for ten years. I just want, I just, we talked to Micah about it, and when, when we decide who's gonna be in here, we need to talk again about, just thinking about taking that back down to five years. I think the five years is a good, great deal for the citizens of Bourbon County. But then I think we're, had a point of diminishing return when we go over that extra five years. You know, there's money there that could go on the tax roll that, you know, would help fund other projects and things like that and help lower everybody's-
Do you understand what the NRP is and what it is?
I was a recipient of it.
Oh, you were, wonderful, okay.
We put our, our new house in, so.
I didn't want to take a lot of time with you and I, we, you know, when we get a third person on board, we'll talk about it again.
And, and I think you pulled some numbers.
Pulled the numbers for the applications, the amount of applications we got before the ten-year and the five-year, they're basically the same within, within a few. So it's not like we had a huge jump once we went to ten years. I think the work that my office has done and then just word of mouth of people that have, you know, used it has, is the reason we've had increases in the amount of applications.
And you put that in a document?
I did, I emailed that to you.
Okay, and then do you want it to, okay, okay.
So.
So I did, I, I probably got it right before this meeting or something, so I didn't have a chance to look at it or print it off.
I was late today when I sent it.
On this one, maybe we can, maybe we can revisit it on the twenty-third.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Yeah, because, I mean, hopefully we'll be three strong again by then.
And it'll just be a process.
Until June twenty-third, then?
Yeah.
It wouldn't take effect until twenty-six. Any application stuff that we have out now, we'd have to honor that ten years.
And if we need to push it on down, we can, we can do that as well, but-
Yep, it's just a, where I have to go rewrite it.
Just look at the numbers and stuff like that.
I have to rewrite it, go before all the taxing entities, get them to sign off on it. Yeah, we'll have to, we'll need a third person on that part, so.
And he's gonna give us a fully executed agreement, whenever it's-
What's that? Yeah, yeah, once we get all the signatures, you'll have a copy of it, so.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir.
All right, no problem.
All right, Commissioner comments.
Do you have anything?
Uh, not really.
Are you sure?
Do you have something? Go ahead.
Yeah.
No, well, actually, I mean, I was just gonna say, it's unfortunate that we've lost another, another member. So as soon as I have, I would assume that the process is, as soon as the governor gets the resignation, then the Republican Party can move forward. I think we're getting to be old pros at this, the Republican Party, so. People in first district, I guess it's gonna be old, old first district. You know, anybody willing to step up, come on out, so. Huh? So, all right, that's all I got, so.
Well, we lost most of our crowd there, David.
Huh?
I said we lost most of our crowd.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, and, you know, as I read this, you're gonna think that I, this is, this solidifies more what the events of tonight, so. But it was recently brought to my attention that the position of commissioner is ever-changing in our county, and I don't disagree, they are right. But why? What can we do to gain some stability? My answer is I believe it to be true and have said from the beginning, beginning, I'd like to put the right people in the right places and give them the tools they need to do their job. This evening, you heard from Dr. Cohen about some services he can offer to our county that I believe can help us get on that track. I've also said from the moment I showed up to the interview at the forum for my appointment that we may have to strategically spend a little bit of money where necessary to save money, and that is what I'm trying to do here. Dr. Cohen is the beginning of my search for contractual services. I intend to utilize the community as well in formation of boards and appointments. I, of course, cannot do these things myself. I need the commission as a whole to believe in the proposals that I bring to the table. I believe I've been transparent in how I operate and have stayed consistent in my behavior, and I will tell the people again, you are the check and balance of this operation. Continue to keep us on track. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that said, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
I second it.
Milburn?
Yes.
Yes. Meeting adjourned. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need these back? Does she keep these?
I don't, no, I don't think, I don't know, I'll take them, David. Did you, did you sign everything that you were supposed to sign?
I don't know, I'll wait.
Okay. I want to do it.
Damn it, damn it, damn it, damn it, damn it. Hey, Anne?
Yes, sir.
Somebody sent me a text while we were all, was in the discussion, I didn't discuss it. They said you gave her ten passenger, made the last meeting. So she might want to double check on that.
She does.
Well, I would say that they wouldn't steer her home.
I messaged-
Stop it, guys, we can stop that thing.